Everyone. Thank you for coming. It is 7:00 PM and I call the August 14th, 2023 School Board Meeting to Order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Board Clerk Maggie Smith, would you please call the roll?
Krista Lee.
Here.
Jennifer Deek.
Here.
Kadija Islam.
Here.
Chris Law.
Here.
Lindsay Aide.
Here.
Maggie Smith.
Here.
Bridget Todd Robbins.
Here.
Barb Wench.
Here.
Okay, with seven of the seven board members present, I declare a quorum. I note that the agenda has been posted, distributed, and sent to the local media. With this in mind, are there any changes to this agenda? I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as published.
They're moved.
All right, Chris has moved.
Second.
And Kadija has second. To approve the agenda as published. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion to approve the agenda as published, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, signify by saying nay. The motion to approve the published agenda has passed. Moving on to public participation. I will call on those registered to address the board relative to an agenda item or item that did not reach resolution through Policy 9130 at this time. Public participants will state their name, address, and affiliation with the item addressed. Public participation is limited to three minutes per person. I ask those present to respect the rights of others wishing to speak by refraining from interrupting them. According to Board Policy 167.3, citizens are expected to use proper etiquette, decorum, and respect when addressing the board. I remind speakers that they are not immune from legal consequences related to the content of their speech. In recognition to the privacy rights of individuals and employees of the district, the Board of Education prohibits any public comment on individual employees, students, or constituents of the district and on matters in which an employee, student, or constituent may be identified or inferred from the comments. Please refer to Policy 167.3 Public Comment at Board Meetings for additional information. Okay, so first up, I have Michelle Wench. You can please come forward and state your name, address, and what you're speaking on.
Hello, my name is Michelle Wench. I reside at W.7871 Windmill Street. I have been a teacher, coach, and advisor in the district for 26 years and have never felt more undervalued and disrespected. I am disappointed to be here to address the board tonight in regards to the district's proposed base wage increase. The district is asking you to impose their offer on the teachers after failed negotiations. The public will hear that teachers will receive a 4% total package increase, and without truly understanding what that means, they will think, "That sounds pretty good." They may also hear that we will be getting a 2.17% increase on the base wage or a $1,211 increase per cell. What they won't hear is that teachers like me and 169 other teachers just like me, we will also be receiving a $1,000 increase to our insurance deductible, a 5% increase in our premium costs, increases to our co-pays, and no prescription coverage until our deductible is met. So what does that all mean? Teachers like me will be receiving less than a 0% increase on the year in which the CPI was 8%. Why is the district proposing this offer? They say that they can't afford anymore largely due to the resolution passed by the board to bring teachers up to their true years of service. I would like to remind the board that the resolution was made in part to right the wrong of freezing teachers on the salary schedule while saying they could not afford the movement while they were also saving more in the general fund than is recommended. What good is having a healthy savings account when you have a leaky roof and you don't use the savings to fix it? When are teachers going to be treated like valuable resources in this district? Fairly compensating teachers should be part of the district's budgeting process. I am asking the board not to impose the district proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Kristin Thompson-Lerberg.
Kristin Thompson-Lerberg, I live at 112 Morris Street. Good evening, I'm Kristin Thompson-Lerberg. I am the mom of a Holman High School junior and stepmom of an Evergreen fourth grader. I've been teaching language arts at Holman High School for 15 years. My husband, Dan Lerberg, also teaches language arts at Holman High School. Additionally, I am vice president of the Holman Education Association, and I'm a member of our negotiations committee. I'd like to speak briefly about the educator pay crisis we are experiencing in the school district of Holman. One of the five elements of the school district's strategic plan, on the wall right back here, is workforce. The goal of this component is in part to recruit, engage, and retain diverse staff. If the district continues to engage in the practice of implementing pay increases far below the CPI and well below what other districts are offering, there is no question that we will continue to have teachers leave our district for better paying opportunities. The Consumer Price Index, or CPI, which is the metric school districts use to determine educators' salaries, measures the average change in price over time of consumer goods and services, everything from food items to rent. As such, a CPI of 8% indicates a significant increase in the costs of goods and services. It is easy to see that a pay increase of roughly 2% of the salary schedule's base wage is not going to enable a teacher and their family to keep up with more costly everyday expenses like groceries, gas, and mortgage payments. The CPI rate of 8% was not a surprise to the district. They knew it was coming, as did other surrounding districts. School districts throughout the state have provided their educators with salary increases that factor in the 8% CPI. And yet, the school district of Holman seemingly made no budgeting plans to address the CPI's impact on our educator compensation. Dr. Mueller shared with the negotiations committee that prior to the state budget being passed, she was worried the district was not going to be able to give educators any increase at all, nothing. How is that possible? How does our budgeting system not account for the key strategic plan element of workforce? How does our budgeting system not account for paying our teachers competitively and fairly? Certainly, that isn't just a minor oversight. It seems to be an intentional omission, and that is deeply troubling. I'm sure the district would object to my assertion, however, actions speak louder than words. Teachers were subjected to a distressingly low increase last year, and this year's proposal increase is even less. These increases were arrived at with basically no negotiation or input from HEA. We have repeatedly come to the table to negotiate in good faith, but to no avail. The district does not seem interested in hearing our perspective. The district office is fond of telling educators how much they appreciate and value us. However, the district's unwillingness to negotiate with HEA or budget in a way that allows teachers to be compensated adequately says otherwise. This isn't just about money, it is also about respect. Educators in the school district of Holman deserve worthwhile increases in both. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, Tracy Dubkowski.
My name is Tracy Dubkowski. I live at W.7704 Van Dunk Place in Holman. I'm a parent to a 2023 graduate of the school district and a soon-to-be freshman at the high school. I have been a middle school teacher in Holman for 23 years. My husband has been a teacher in this district for over 25 years. I'm also the current HEA president. I'm addressing Agenda Item 8.3C regarding educator base wages. Once again this summer, HEA attempted in good faith to negotiate educator wages with the district. When we met with the district to exchange proposals, HEA was willing to work with the district to meet somewhere in the middle of their initial proposal and ours. What the negotiations team was told by the district several times was that they were not willing to change their proposal. The negotiations team asked several times over the course of two meetings and was told no. At one point, we were also told we should be grateful for the district's offer because initially the district thought that they would not be able to give any increases at all. We were and still are willing to work with the district. This year, the CPI percentage is the highest it has ever been, 8%, and the district's offer is even lower than last year's. As a district, you cannot continue to tell educators that you appreciate everything that they do, that they matter to you, and you value them while giving them the lowest increase by far of any surrounding district. The district continues to use the two board resolutions that gave educators the steps back that they should have earned while being frozen as their rationale for not being able to give larger increases. They have said that last year's average salary increase was 11%. Did some people see large increases? Yes, because the school board gave them the steps they were denied for years. But we need to realize that many teachers saw far less than 11%. At the Meet and Confir meeting, the district stated that Holman was number one for average teacher salary. That is directly due to the number of teachers who have stayed in this district, who have dedicated well over 10 years to the students of Holman. I am, as we all should be, grateful that they chose to stay. Our district is better because of the experienced teachers we have in it. What this year's base wage increase will mean to the one-third of educators who have been in the district the longest, these people who have master's degrees plus 30 grad credits, many of these teachers have national board certifications and additional reading certifications, these are people who have stayed with Holman even when they were frozen for many years. What this increase will equate to is less than $100 per month before taxes or any of the other things. Teachers are not trying to be greedy, they would just like to be able to pay for day-to-day things. Here's the thing, we all know how budgets work. Teachers understand that school districts do not have endless amounts of money. If something is important to you, you find a way to budget for it. We ask that you not impose the district's base wage proposal. Either ask the district to actually negotiate with HEA or offer something more than what they have offered. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, moving on to recognition and thank yous. Dr. Mueller.
Yeah, I have one recognition this evening. Just wanted to do a thank you to the Ashley Charitable Foundation and the Ron and Joyce Wanek Foundation. They together gave a donation of $8,000 to our Holman High School Skills USA program. That money will definitely go to the benefit many of our students and their projects, so we thank them for that.
That's it. All right, thank you. Moving on to reports and discussion. Item 8.1, I welcome Director of Nutrition Services Mike Gasper to present the 2324 School Meal Prices. This item will appear on the August 28th consent agenda.
Good evening. Usually this process is something we do in May, but with the inflation and there was money from the government that was maybe going to be included in our reimbursements and then was unsure, we needed to wait to make a decision on whether or not we needed to increase prices. The school nutrition program has always tried to offer the best value for our students and our families. And while our labor rates are going to increase 4%, we're looking at food prices going 5% to 7% more this year than last year. We did well last year from a fund balance standpoint due to many grants that we received that we applied for, local purchasing grants so we could buy beef and other things from local farmers, so we didn't experience the deficit that we were anticipating. So we're going to recommend this year to not raise any prices for the school lunch program, breakfast program. In addition to that, for the second year in a row, we're going to propose that we cover any student that qualifies for reduced meals, and typically they would have to pay 30 cents for breakfast, 40 cents for lunch. We're going to cover that cost, so those kids will essentially be free and again, offering more value hopefully to those families. So that's essentially our recommendation. So questions?
Okay, questions? Sounds good, Mike, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item 8.2. Next, Holman Middle School Associate Principal and Activities Director Ben Taschner will share the recommendation for Holman Middle School Adaptive Sports League coaching positions. This item will appear on the August 28th consent agenda.
Hi there. Again, my name is Ben Taschner, AP and AD at Holman Middle School. This spring, I came with Mrs. Engel, our adapted PE teacher, and we talked about our trial run of our adaptive sports league at Holman Middle School. It was a huge success. We had 10 to 12 students that signed up. As we kind of look forward, kind of then also trying to make a plan for the future of ASL at the middle school. As we talk about our vision of belong, succeed, this would be a huge thing for us to be in the forefront to advocate for our students with disabilities. We have it at the high school and joining with them to advocate for students with disabilities would be awesome at the middle school. It'd be split into three seasons, soccer in the fall, floor hockey in the winter, and wiffle ball in the spring. And so what I'm asking is for a head coach position and two assistants, the head coach being paid for each, 1% for the fall, 1% for the winter, and 1% for the spring off of, and looking at the 2223 salary schedule. And so then this would be a cost of $435 per season. And then two assistant coaches at half a percent for the fall, for the winter, and for the spring, again based off the 2223 salary schedule. This would be $217 for each position and then each season. So as we looked at that, worked with Ms. Cates and looking at the high school and then the middle school ASL, tried to compare them and make sure that we're looking at both of them. And so, yeah, so I'm coming, asking for, I can move forward with an ASL program at the middle school. Any questions?
Any questions?
So is the 1% and the half percent consistent with other coaching positions for the terms?
It was consistent in looking at how much time they were being used. So this is looking at, so ASL would practice two days a week, and so then our other sports practicing every day, so five days a week.
Questions? Okay, thank you, Ben.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, moving on to item 8.3. Director of Human Resources Melissa Cates will now present the 2324 Base Wage Rates for Consideration on Tonight's Consent Agenda.
Good evening. So tonight, we're bringing forward three recommendations for base wage increases that cover all staff in the district. The first group is hourly and non-affiliated staff. As I go through these, you'll see that this is a recommendation for 4% across all groups. So starting with hourly and non-affiliated, our non-affiliated are staff who are salaried but not in supervisory roles. So the 4% would be distributed across this group at an 80 cent per hour increase to their base wages. There is additional scheduled longevity included in that as well. The total budget impact is estimated to be $370,856 for that group. For the administrators and directors, again, 4% increase. There is one administrator who will earn longevity, which will impact that, go into that wage increase as well. Total estimate for this group is $226,905. And then the last group is educators. The educator group was a 4% total base wage increase. That includes $1,211 per cell base wage increases. All supplemental increases include steps, lanes, and resolution two as well, for a total budget impact of $90272. And this is on consent this evening as well.
Okay, any questions? Okay, thank you, Melissa. All right, moving on to item 8.4. Executive Director of Student Services Jill Mason will present Regarding a Memorandum of Understanding with Peace of Mind Counseling. This item will appear on the August 28th consent agenda.
Good evening. So I'm here tonight to just inform you that we have another year with our ESR funds for a mental health provider through Peace of Mind. It was very successful last year for the individual to be here in all of our buildings. I think about halfway through the school year, we ended up maxing out his capacity, and so continued to try to find ways to support our students through that. So we will have another year, we are proposing another year using our ESR funds with Peace of Mind, and then eventually we'll talk about a plan for after ESR funds are gone. Any questions about that?
Any questions? Okay, no questions, thank you. Okay, moving on to our consent agenda. For the consent agenda, the board has been furnished with background materials on each item or has discussed it at a previous meeting. These will be acted upon with one vote without discussion. Would any board member like an item pulled out of the consent agenda to be discussed and or voted on separately?
I would like item 9.6, 2023-24 Base Wage Rates, to be pulled out and voted on separately.
Is that all of 9.6 or 9.6 A, B, or C?
All of 9.6.
Kadija has asked for item 9.6, all of 9.6, to be discussed separately. Okay, are there any other items? Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as provided with the exception of item 9.6.
Sumo.
That was Maggie? Okay.
Second.
Second by Lindsay. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda except for item 9.6, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion passes. Okay, moving on to item 9.6. Do we have a motion to approve the 2223 Base Wage Rates, hourly and non-affiliated administrators and directors and educators as presented?
Um.
Okay, Chris has moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Barb has second. The motion to approve the 2223 Base Wage Rates, hourly and non-affiliated administrators and directors and educators as presented. Is there any discussion?
I would like to have some of the concerns that were raised by the educators who participated publicly today be addressed specifically at this meeting. So there are a couple of things that came up in the public participation that I would love us to address as much as we possibly can, and then from there, there was a specific ask by the HEA that I would like to hear some discussion on as well, as far as, I believe, reopening negotiations. So I guess maybe Julie, would you be able to discuss surrounding districts? That was one thing that was brought up, or I don't know how we proceed from here, but I feel we should discuss some of the concerns.
Sure, we did talk about surrounding districts. I believe Dr. Mueller replied to that recently to board interest, so I would like to not, I'd like to refer to her and what she replied already, so it's consistent in that.
Yeah.
If you have it available.
So I did address that in my weekly update to the board and that, and we do have a running sheet with over 170 districts in the state of Wisconsin that report where they're at within their negotiations, and the average compensation on that was between 4% and 5%. As far as our surrounding districts, I know that some are still in negotiations, working through that. I do know Onalaska has settled at a, I don't want to misquote, 6...
6% and 6.8%.
I know, 6.8% total package. I do know that Sparta is still, West Salem was, I'd have to look up on my notes, 4.5...
4.5.
Thank you, that's what I said, 4.5%. I do know, like we talked about in the Meet and Confir and shared, is one thing that has happened in Onalaska that did not happen for the school district of Holman is they received an extra over $600 per pupil in revenue beyond the $325 per pupil, which is unfortunate. And the reason for that, and Julie could speak much more intelligently than me on this, is the amount you as a district spend per pupil, they had legislation go through that if you weren't spending $11,000 per pupil, they were going to ensure the district had the dollars to make that $11,000 per pupil. So this year, some districts received more dollars than other districts on that per pupil amount. The other fact in Holman is currently our enrollment in our earlier grades is down 81 students from prior year, and our revenue is generated on enrollment. And, you know, a lot of times in the community, we hear, "We're growing, we're growing, we're growing." We aren't seeing those numbers right now, which is very concerning in that. And so, did I answer that first question there?
Yeah, of course. I don't know if other people have questions, I have more questions, but I can continue. So another thing that came up was our dashboard workforce section talking about retaining staff, and the question was posed of whether or not, whether or not the way that we are handling the negotiations or whether or not the amount that we're able to offer teachers is actually aligning with that effort to retain well-trained staff. So I'm curious if I could hear some about that? How do we feel if that is aligning well with our...
I could, what I can share is facts, and our retention rate for educators is 93% in that currently. That does not include resignations in that, it's just the retention.
Include retirement.
I mean retirements, sorry, sorry, retirements, misspoke. I'm just making sure everyone's listening in the crowd.
You said 93%?
Yeah.
Okay.
We do know the environment has changed immensely in the last few years, and there's a lot of movement, you know, amongst areas because there's a lot of need for educators in different positions and roles in the area, so.
Any other questions?
Yeah, so it was also said that the CPI was not unknown to the district. Is there a way, I guess, I'm new to this, so I don't know how we factor in future CPI or how soon in advance we know those kinds of things, and whether or not we have any policies in place that safeguard us against running into situations where we come in way below the CPIU.
Want me to speak to that?
You can start.
I believe 8% is the highest it's been since the early 80s, and so I don't know that anyone could have actually predicted an 8% CPI, which is being experienced by all of us. However, we do follow like a month-by-month trend with a 12-month look back. So for example, right now, we know eight months out of the 12 that will be included in next July 1st CPIU for base wage negotiations. So we do track that and have a understanding on the direction it is headed toward, right? But last year, it wasn't close to 8%, and nobody really would have predicted that, I don't think. In addition, in order to quickly take action to accommodate such a CPI would be rather difficult within a budget. We have not seen that kind of increase in CPI and wages, so.
Any other questions?
I also would like the district to respond to the idea that, well, it was brought up that it feels, or the sense that I got from the public participation was that the way that this is being handled felt like an intentional omission of this very necessary need to increase wage relative to inflation or just because we need to invest more in our teachers. So I would love if we could respond to the idea that this is an intentional, and I don't think that Kristin was specifically saying it was, but just what do we have in place to, you kind of talked about the CPIU and how we don't, we have rough estimates of what that will look like, but, you know, are there ways that we could better anticipate these things, like with our budget? I'm not asking this in the most eloquent way, but these are kind of the questions that are running through my mind.
So when it comes to a district budget, what would be wonderful if, when the CPI increased, as a as a state public school, we got increased funds from our legislators so we could pay our staff those increases? That's not unfortunately how it works. We're not, so what happens is our revenue is driven off of other factors. This is the first time in many years, well, since I've ever remember that they actually increased what's called a revenue limit, which allows us to spend more in our budget without going to a referendum. And it was the 325 per pupil. And they're saying that's going to be again next year, we know two years for sure, which we, we know that, that's for sure. It's so hard in public schools because they do a budget every two years and depending on who is, uh, making decisions in the legislature, you don't know what's going to come out. So, it makes it hard, but there are things we do know. And what we do know is our enrollment's going down some. And we're going to have to, if, we're going to have to make some tough decisions if, in the district if things keep happening like this and we're going to have to prioritize what's most important to us in Holman. This is really tough, this is very hard. I, you might not feel this, but I do believe investing in our people is important as to why. We did an unusual mid-year increase last year, we tried. The part that's hard is we will have to look at how many staff we have in positions, how we deliver our services, or what things do we have in our budget that we maybe don't, we can cut back on. We're going to have to make hard decisions coming up, like many districts have already had to do. We've been very fortunate not having to do that yet because we've had a very healthy fund balance. But the fund balance isn't last forever, you can't use ongoing expenses for a fund balance. So, we have to figure out, we have some time because we've had great fiscal planning by our boards, but we need to figure out what we're going to do moving forward if our enrollment keeps going down and our budgets aren't increasing from the state. So, we have to make some decisions around that. And we want to engage with our educators on what that looks like this upcoming year definitely because the thing is, whatever decisions are made, they're going to be hard decisions. I, I just, I mean, I don't know how else to say it, so.
Could you speak a little further to, um, you know, the, the fiscal cliff of the Esser dollars? Because I feel like that's an, I know that's not exactly what we're talking about, but I feel like that's an impactful piece of the budget after 2023 to 2024 that maybe not everyone was aware of.
Yeah, so currently, and Julie can piggyback if she wants, I have to. Currently, we continue to operate in a deficit budget, which basically means our expenses are exceeding our revenue in the district. So, we've been using fund balance for operational expenses. Um, we've did that, did this this past year, we're doing it again this year. We decided to dig in and have the deficit till, still, so to give a 4% increase across all of our wage groups. If we were to balance our budget, it wouldn't be 4% because we feel like we can come up with strategies and ways to, um, find those dollars to continue paying our, our people. Our Esser dollars, we have... Those are funds for us right now that are supporting really important things going on in the district. A lot of our social and emotional learning positions. We have others that we've used Esser dollars for resources for our students, resources and training for staff and so on. Those dollars are, we have this upcoming school year and after that, we no longer have those dollars. Those aren't even built, those are zeroed out in our budget. In other words, we have them as expenses, but we also have them as revenue in there and they zero each other out. So, that's another million dollars right now that we're paying out in wages for positions that are very important. And our leadership team is working really hard to figure out how do we maintain what we really need for our students and for our staff. So, that's the challenges that we've been working on. So, I don't know if that, that helps you.
Uh, I have a clarifying question regarding the mid-year increase. Is, so it was referenced as not actually an increase, but making up for a deficit that already existed. Is this, maybe this is not, okay, maybe this is not the one that I'm thinking of, or the 11% increase?
I think, I can clarify, so, well, there was a mid-year increase for all employees last year. And then there was, um, the base wage, which was 4.7%. And then at, the board had passed some resolutions, which you heard educators refer to as catching us up. So, negotiations happens each year with the bargaining unit. And in those years, there was always a percent brought to the negotiations table and the union negotiated with the team as to how they wanted those dollars distributed. And there was times where, like you hear, "Well, we didn't get a step," or "We did lanes," or "We only got a half step." And those were things that were negotiated with the union during those times, which the resolution was to help get people where they felt they belonged for their years in the, in the district, if that makes sense, so.
And then, uh, one more question, is there any educator voice included when we're talking about developing strategies for balancing the budget?
Yes, there's going to have to be. There's no way around it, so.
That's all we have. Okay. All right, so, um... So, all those in favor of the motion to approve the 2023-24 base wage rates, hourly and non-affiliated administrators, directors, and educators as presented, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passes. All right, moving on to the board debrief. I will call upon board members and ask you to present any comments or committee reports you have. Wait a second. Okay, Crystal, you can go first.
Um... I guess I have no comment, I'll just leave it at that.
Yes, that's all right.
All right.
All right, next is Kadija.
Um... I am a little uncomfortable with how things have gone. Uh, I think the fact that we just saw so many educators walk out so disappointed should paint a really poignant picture for us as a board about how we proceed. I know that they're not here to hear these, but hopefully those watching along at home and, um, people watching this on replay will hear that. I personally, and I think a lot of members of this board, have spent time reading every single email that has come through, have spent time listening to the stories that educators have shared. And I personally am new to this and I, but I think it's irresponsible for me to pass the buck as this is something that happened before I was here. I think we do have to be very intentional and very careful about how we proceed as a district because at the end of the day, we are a team. We are not the board and district administration and educators and all of these separate groups. We are a team and we are here to complete a mission or goal. And what I'm hearing from educators from across the district is that they don't feel like they're part of the team. And again, you know, many of these things I've only become aware of within the last few months that I've been able to sit on this board and I'm very thankful that I have been able to. And I'm not necessarily putting anybody in the spotlight as the person who is to blame because I don't believe that's true. I believe that we're all part of creating a culture, uh, we're all part of creating a community. We each have our role to play. And right now, I think it's fair to say that based on the reaction from educators and the information that I've received, that our community and our culture is in crisis. We need to be very intentional about how we proceed as far as showing teachers that they are valued, the way that we are conducting ourselves, the way that we hold on to our own responsibility. I personally would like to see there be a more emphasis placed on including teacher voice in different decisions that are made, but also just increasing the number of channels of communication that exists for teachers to discuss things that are going, um, poorly or things maybe that are going well, uh, so that we make sure that we can handle the things that are not necessarily financial in a very holistic way, that we make sure that teachers are feeling appreciated. And that, and I'm saying educators, but I should be including all staff, everybody who makes up this district. Uh, everybody deserves to feel like their concerns are being addressed. So, uh, moving forward, I think we just need to be, um, collaborative in our efforts. Uh, I hear from both sides this willingness to come to the table and have open and honest and transparent discussions. And I don't know what kind of roadblocks exist at this point, but I would like to see more of, more collaboration and, um, you know, maybe some checking of... Setting our, setting ourselves aside for the betterment of the larger district. Whether that be, you know, us willing to, as a board, hear out or seek out more, um, diverse opinions on different things or whether that means increasing the number of ways that teachers are able to share their concerns about the district. I... I think that we have some work to do and that's where I'll leave it.
All right, thank you, Chris. Okay, Lindsay?
I'm also disappointed that everybody left because now I feel more awkward giving my speech. So, this is what I was going to say. And Kadija, I wish you were at the meeting that we had last week because a lot of, I think, those same questions we had. So, then I put it all down here that I was going to say, but you did a nice job, Chris, explaining everything.
Tried.
So, I was going to say that I wanted to talk to everybody, you know, more as a friend and not a board member because, you know, I kind of dislike that we're up here and that they're out there creating this like division because we were voted in to represent everyone and, um, it, I don't like that feeling of being divided. Uh, again, in the past couple of weeks, we received many emails from educators. I did read every single one that came through. To be honest, it was very hard to read as there were many assumptions and misunderstandings. I wear my heart on my sleeve and I do care about the teachers a great deal and all the staff in our district. And I think myself and my opinion is that everyone here would improve larger increases if that were feasible because we know that everyone in this district is hardworking and deserves it. The reality, as was said earlier, is that we are working with the budget. Many of us choose to work in this type of a field instead of a large corporation where maybe we could get huge salaries and bonuses, but we do this work because we care about the kids. We care about the vulnerable and about those who need support in our community. A big part of the school budget is based on enrollments, as was said. I'm sure many of you think like me that, "Oh, look at all the new subdivisions in Holman, we're just booming, we're going to have a million kids enrolling." And that's just not what the numbers are showing. A lot of what we do behind the scene is look at all the data and it's, the enrollments are going down. And so, then the amount of money we get per child is going down. You know, more kids are doing homeschool or an open enrolling in districts closer to where their parents work. Low enrollment is not just a concern here, it's a national concern and in our neighboring districts. We were really uncertain in the beginning of summer what was going to happen with the state budget. And it could have meant we wouldn't be able to do raises and it could have maybe even led to layoffs. The board wanted to wait and see what would happen. And I was very pleased that we did because instead we were approving some increases. I know that it doesn't seem like much at all and I empathize with you all that you wish it was more. Believe me, I'm a social worker, I had wages frozen for years, I'm in the same boat. The, the budget was from the state, uh, you couldn't do much about it where, where I was working. You know, personally, in, in all of our meetings, I've asked a lot of questions. It's, it's unfortunate that there's so much that goes on behind the scenes with all administration. They're working so hard to crunch the numbers and figure things out. And I can speak from just the experiences I have had with administration and Julie and Dr. Mueller that they're very caring individuals and they put a lot of hard work into, to figuring all this out and seeing like what's the most that we can give here. And, and with the questions I ask and the questions I've heard, I do feel we're very thorough and trying to give as much as we could. Believe me, we're trying to see, is there any other way, what else could we be doing here? And so, I know that you've heard that the 4% is, it's still going to put us at some risk in the future, but they were willing to, to say that, yeah, let's, let's go with that because we know that the teachers deserve something. I know that, uh, other districts are able to give more, which is true, but you have to realize that they are also losing things. They, you know, La Crosse is closing a school, sometime, they might have increased class sizes and layoffs and taxpayer referendums. We could do a referendum, but it was already voted by the community that that would not be supported, uh, to do a referendum when we're already doing one for the much-needed renovations. So, you know, it's tough to know what direction to head. Another reason other schools can give more is everything that was explained before, so I won't go into that one. But something to keep in mind, you know, is that we are paying more per student because we have those Cadillac services, like an example is our own transportation within the district. I mean, I really appreciate that as a parent and not having to contract out and have other issues with that. There's a lot of those things that Holman does that people don't realize. That's why we are not getting like that extra like Onalaska. Um, and we have many national awards to back that up too. I want to end by being action-focused. I've asked about if we could do lean studies as a district and was pleased that Dr. Mueller was already focused in on that. And being proactive in our district is, is really key. I encourage you all to show up to meetings, not just this meeting. Show up to the meetings, make sure you're hearing the facts, share your opinions before, you know, we go to the table or decisions are, are made. Ask questions, ask a lot of questions, figure out what's going on and get your voice out there. We can work together to come up with, how can we be lean as a district? If you have an idea, share it. What can we do to increase enrollments in our district? If anyone has ideas and how to advertise for, you know, getting more enrollments as a district, let us know. And then again, you know, provide your input, show up, be heard, and I'll continue to advocate and support you all as you voted me to do. Thank you.
Thanks, Lindsay. Uh, Maggie?
I also had a speech and was hoping everyone would stay, so I'm going to read it anyways. It feels a little awkward. I wanted to thank everyone, uh, for taking the time to share their thoughts and their feedback on the compensation and salary changes, whether it was tonight, um, in person, via email, and especially to those who spoke to me about this in person. I also want to thank admin for answering all of our questions and providing all of the information to help us make an informed decision. I know that, that many educators are disappointed. I too am a public employee whose way... I too am a public employee whose wages are set by a legislative body, and I know it's really disheartening when compensation doesn't match your efforts. And I think that that seems to be the feeling particularly for those who've been supporting Holman the longest. And I also think and respect that the board's in a difficult position this year, knowing about the declining enrollment and deficit spending and the Esser dollars, and that we have to walk a really tough line considering fiduciary responsibility and the fiscal situation of the district this year, but also in future years, and that this is especially tough because, as we've already talked about, some of our neighboring districts did receive additional dollars and were able to offer more for their staff. I also have to say that it, you know, I think a lot of people know this, but it is continually frustrating to me that the state does not keep up with CPI, and the state and frankly the country continue to undervalue public education in a way that doesn't allow districts to keep up with costs or increasing student needs. You know, I hope that we all continue to speak with our legislators and vote for those who support public education. And then I also want to recognize, and I've already shared this, I think, with everyone at the table, that I do think our current salary structure seems to create or perpetuate some inequities, and I do want us to continue the conversations and the collaboration about how we can work to alleviate some of those pain points. And finally, I want to say, you know, I hope that people will continue to share their thoughts, and I have especially appreciated the really granular and like specific suggestions and really solutions-focused ideas. I think those are very helpful, and as others have said, I've read every email, and it, you know, it might fall a little flat tonight, but I really do appreciate everything that our, all of our staff do for our students and our community. Thank you.
Thanks, Maggie. Bridgette?
Yeah, I just, you know, would repeat many of the things said tonight, and just, again, yeah, I wanted to thank all of our educators and staff who sent emails and showed up tonight to really advocate around wage compensation. This has not been an easy topic for anybody here. The hours that we've all spent looking at the really thorough information that was provided by our admin, the, you know, the budget, the staff retention rates, enrollment trends, insurance rates, how our state funding has impacted us in our outlying school districts. And yeah, I know it's not necessarily the outcome that many folks wanted, and I'm not quite sure, due to all those factors, that we were able to even come up with a positive stakeholder, or positive outcome that would have, you know, affected positively all of the stakeholders involved. I like what Kadija said about moving forward with transparency and collaboration. We know relationships matter. We know that we have some work to do around, you know, relationships with the board and our district admin, and our district admin and our staff, and the board and our staff. And we also know when those relationships don't exist, that we start seeing some distrust, and we start seeing some of those assumptions being made around what our intentions really are, and I worry about that, but I'm really hopeful, because I know everyone on here. I know how much, you know, time and energy everyone on this board has spent wanting to do the best job that we can, and I'm really hopeful that we're going to, you know, come out of this stronger and a much more unified district, so thank you.
All right, thank you, Bridgette. Barb?
Echoing with what everybody else has said tonight, I also just want to say that I am thankful that to date, due to the fiscally responsible decisions, very difficult decisions made by our administration, and I want to single out Julie Holman. As a treasurer, I cannot believe the work she does to get us where we are today, and I am just so thankful for that. And because of her, this district has not had to make those difficult decisions that other districts in our area have, and that even there, even though there may be perceptions tonight that the decisions we made may show otherwise, I just want to say that my appreciation and gratitude for the work of our educators has not changed.
All right, thank you, Barb. Okay, I just want to thank all who attended tonight's meeting. We acknowledge that the outcome might not have fully met everyone's expectations, but given the constraints of our existing compensation model and budget, we are doing the best we can. Please understand that your voices are heard by the board members, and we are committed to striving for improvements and are dedicated to making improvements that align with your I guess many of the other things that I thought about saying tonight have been said already as well, but please know that we do appreciate you and everything that you do for our students. So, given that, we will move on to the board meeting schedule. So, on August twenty-eighth, it is the back-to-school kickoff. I believe that's at eight AM at the, in the gym, high school gym. So, all board members are invited to attend that, and I hope many of you can make it. And then our upcoming board meeting schedule will be, the next three meetings will be August, that evening, August twenty-eighth, and then September eleventh and September twenty-fifth. So, is there any other business that needs to come before the board at this time? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
All right, Chris has moved.
Second.
That was Maggie. All right. Maggie, second to adjourn the meeting at seven fifty-six PM. Motion carried. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, signify by saying nay. Motion passes.